Just want to talk on.
Time set, perfect. Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of Trustees with Spokane Public Library. We have a quorum, so we now may proceed. Very nice to see you. Okay, any visitors that have come in, walked in, signed in? Mm hmm. All righty then, so we will now go next to the land acknowledgement. All Spokane Public Library buildings sit on the traditional homelands of the four bands of the Spokane Tribe of Indians. Upper Band, Middle Band, Lower Band, and Chulilla Band. Since time immemorial, the Spokane Tribe of Indians has lived and cared for these grounds, identifying themselves as the flesh of the earth. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. We show gratitude to the land, river, and peoples who have been fishing, hunting, harvesting, and gathering here for generations. May we learn from one another's stories so that we may nurture the relationship of the people of the Spokane Tribe and to all those who share this land. Okay, any adoptions or changes for the minutes? Okay, need approval to. For the.
I've moved to approve the June twenty twenty four.
Second?
Second.
Opposed? All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Four minutes, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Need a motion?
Well, let's get ahead, but I now approve also the June twenty twenty four.
Thank you. Favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay, Nicole?
Thank you. We do the bills and contributions?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. Oh, okay. Um, cool, so for the financial update for June twenty twenty four, our cash and investments trend for library operations. Uh, we're now able to cover a hundred and forty days of total operating costs in our available cash and investments. Um, we did receive the levy list back in May, if you recall, um, so we're now, uh, with our spending of, um, cash, we're now over our resources, uh, in our expenses by about three hundred thousand dollars year to date. And we are on track to still send down our fund balance by about nine hundred and sixty-five thousand by year end. Um, so our expenditure trend for operations, we closed June with a total of expenses of nine hundred ten thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Of that amount, we spent seventy-six percent for personnel, that's six hundred eighty-five dollars and eight hundred fifty-two, sorry, six hundred eighty-five thousand eight fifty-two. For our capital books materials, we purchased eighty thousand four hundred and thirty-two in the month of June. Um, we also had a total of forty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-seven, uh, that was charged for inter-fund services. Um, we had twenty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-three that was spent for security. Uh, we also spent a total of eighteen thousand one seventy-four on our utilities, and a little side note on, on the, uh, utilities for the central branch, are, we're really looking at some savings right now on, on the, um, solar panels, so that we were spending between eighteen and twenty thousand per month for the bridge in utilities, and it was about five thousand for, for that month, so that's looking pretty good so far. Any questions on the operations before I move on to the bond fund? Thank you. So for the bond fund fund, in June, we did pay weaker contracting for the Indian Trail Landscaping Project. We also paid at Leonie and Kibble for the Five Mile Kiosk, uh, installation project. And then this next statement is no longer active. That we were working, at, at the time we published this, we were working with the city on obtaining our permit for the Nevada construction to begin. That permit, uh, we actually received yesterday. The Alpine Contractors is ready to break down, so they're currently just waiting for some of their staff to agree of other projects, so. So, super exciting. Um, and then for business office updates, so I just want to thank, um, all of our staff who are involved with the city's US Bank for just seeing hard changes. Uh, we, we received some really great feedback from, from that department who was working on, on that with us. We were second to the fire, uh, department to, to go, go through that, that training and those updates. And it was just absolutely stellar and really smooth, so I just want to thank everybody for, for that. And then, uh, the mayor's administration and city budget office have implemented a biennial budget process for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six, so we'll get an, an update on that here soon. Thank you so much.
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
That was it. Like, just the, the instruction update.
Right? There are no reports from the chairman today, so open you in.
All right, I will be brief, uh, because this is a brief report. Uh, as mentioned last month, uh, we did attend the ALA's annual conference in San Diego. Congratulations to Amanda's team for three awards at that conference, it's really great to see them, uh, receive those and participate in the conference as well. Uh, this month, as far as community professional contacts, I met with leadership from the Inland Northwest Behavioral Health uh, organization, uh, they, uh, find some really great information on some rather less known mental health resources in the community, so I'm looking forward to dispersing that information, uh, for staff uh, when we are dealing with people with crisis. Uh, at the request of the city, uh, we extended hours at Central uh, on Saturday and Sunday. We went a third week in, like, last week in June, right, and then again, first weekend in July, and it looks like we will be doing that again this weekend, if we can get the staffing for it. Uh, the city does reimburse us for the extended hours passed for staffing and security. For our DEI efforts, uh, July, we are focusing on Stars Are Scattered, which is a graphic novel, uh, about growing up in a refugee camp, I'm about halfway through it. It's a very approachable, yet very difficult, uh, read, uh, to, uh, process. Uh, but great selection for those that want to learn more about like the refugee camp. And for July, we created a resource list for disability pride month, as we did last year as well. For staffing, our star, stars went to Mason, Neil, and Ryan Tucker. They worked on a pretty, uh, some pretty phenomenal, uh, video shorts geared towards kids that focus on the environment and the local infrastructure of Spokane. You can check it out on our YouTube channel, you can also access them on our library homepage. Really great high-quality, uh, and information, uh, that really has a local appeal, uh, and flavor as well. Uh, and for the summer, I do take off my staff office hours and focus more on these team meetings throughout the organization, just a different way for folks to connect with me. For our collection, these are our books and materials, uh, we recently contracted with another vendor for purchasing materials. It's Ingram, uh, they will allow us to purchase a greater variety of materials. There's been a bit of a bottleneck with our previous, uh, previous vendor, uh, so we're hoping to, to get greater diversity of materials to better meet the demand of the public. And as Nicole said, we continue to take part also in budget discussions with mayor's administration, city council. And our finance committee, the library finance committee met last week to go over some of the options that we're looking at and. Any other questions?
All right, let's see, I don't see. So, Amanda?
Hi. Uh, so like Andrew mentioned, my team traveled to San Diego to accept our three national library awards. And I included some photos. Good shelves for all of the awards. About what I'm going to deploy that. I did buy some frames. Um, and so I included some photos there from the conference. We also presented Not at the Mercy of the Algorithm, a little lightning talk at the Spring Share booth at ALA. So it was fun to be able to also present some of the work that we do, um, and some best practices about using email to reach your audience. Uh, our latest issue of Lilac City Local is now on stands, uh, which means at all of the libraries. And I, we brought you copies of that as well, um, it has some really great stories about our, our bake-off that we recently had, or sorry, our bake-off that we recently had at Central, um, uh, I'm blanking on what else I mentioned, Lullaby Project, a lot of great projects in there. Oh, that's the cover story, is the Lullaby Project, um, two of our, or one of our partners, partner. Um, and, um, Andy Ramsey worked on com- composing those lullabies, and so that's our, our cover image there. Um, some of our most visited webpages, or our most visited webpage this la- last month was Summer Reading Club. And that was really cool to see, because it just shows a lot of the interest from the community and a lot of the work that we're doing to get the word out about Summer Reading Club right now. Often, our top visited pages are about our locations, and so to have a ongoing program exceed the traffic on our website, um, really shows that, that that's getting a lot of traction. Our top social media content was our pride post about free people read freely. Uh, and you can see, we got sixteen thousand interactions, which was a two-hundred-and-twenty-eight percent increase in engagement, which Gary, I know you've been asking about that. It's not always positive comments, but it did lead to a big number, so, um, and we're continuing to see really positive media, earned media engagement as well. We had eleven stories in June, and that's tracking well for July as well, so. Um, and that concludes my report, any questions I can answer?
So, Amanda, we can have this conversation offline, but, uh, I guess it was three, four months ago, I was at a conference for PBS, and one of the things that they showed was a an op- an opportunity for people to come in at the library and do cooking. And one of the things that they did was they offered everyone different pasta makers, so that they would, that would be the draw to come in, and then everybody would do a community dinner. And it was something that brought in a whole lot of folks, and it was one of those things that was so good that they wanted to do it again, so I thought I would bring that up, and you might have that conversation offline, but I thought that might be something fun to do.
A really fun program, and I know it would really match with what we're doing at Shadle Park Library, which is that farm-to-table experience, so, um, we can definitely pass, pass on that suggestion to Jinjin.
Hey, Jason?
All right, uh, for June, for June. Um, we had three hundred and forty-eight programs, and that's with, uh, police staff taking the first week of June off, which is well-earned, because they've picked up summer reading, um, we had four thousand five hundred and seventy-one people come to programs in June. Um, let's see, that the youth impacts were actually jumped by five whole points, which we talked about last time, and summer reading is going to really boost their score up, because they're doing big things, more involved things, uh, which they did, um, Paw Patrol Storytime was a big hit. Um, was the biggest program we have, we did it multiple times, the two-hundred-and-five people showed up to Paw Patrol Storytime. Um, we've partnered with Peers Empower Peers, which is a group of peer counselors that train other, train to, uh, build other peer counselors, they had their annual conference at the Central Library this year. It's a big success with three hundred and fifteen people coming to that. Um, some highlights, uh, Sharma Shields, uh, kicked off the first annual Northwest Poetry Salon at Liberty Park, which is a big big hit there. Um, summer reading kickoff parties brought in over two hundred people. We hosted the Police Chief Vinylist Forum at the Central Library, which was a good event, and it was live streamed as well on City Cable Five. Oh, this is a really interesting one, we, the Hive, uh, Artisan Resonance Program's been going on almost three years now, I think three-year anniversary is coming up. And Eva spearheaded a gallery exhibit, or a, uh, opening for a gallery exhibit at the Serenac. Um, art projects, which is of all Hive alumni or alumnus at the, uh, all their art displayed offsite, so which kind of really drives home, people are coming to the Hive, getting the experience, and then now they're being displayed in other galleries throughout town, and that, the opening of that drew a hundred and seven people, and that room is uh, the size of a bathroom, so. To imagine what color it was, and that was a really cool. Had two hundred and four of the special team one-on-ones this month, which is the high number as well, and that's all I have. Questions?
I think we should review that number.
The one-on-ones?
Yeah.
Um, we, with the additional, uh, music educator, we've been able to more than double our, the music lessons, so that helps, um. Mark is always busy, the, the special collections, so he's busy. And Colin, nineteen, has been doing a lot of technology-based one-on-one things, it's seventeen of those. Real big number.
Any question? Well, now it's my pleasure and it's my honor, Your Honor, to, uh, to join us here at the library, and we look forward to hearing from you, so.
Great, can I say right here? All right.
Now. Do we have a camera that we could?
Always make sure everybody can hear me online and it was behind me as well. Uh, well, thank you so much for the invitation to be here, I really appreciate it. Uh, Andrew and I had a good conversation, uh, preceding this. And I'm here, I guess, uh, first of all, uh, just, just to say a big thank you. Uh, thank you to the board members. I thank you to the, the, the leadership and the, and the staff at the library, I, we are um, in Spokane, so fortunate to have such a strong labor system. It is really a key core strength of our community. And it's, it's strength in programming and, and we already heard award-winning, but it's also strength in neighborhood and community building. And it's, uh, it's strength in public support and, and trust. So I just want you to personally know how much I appreciate that, I've always appreciated it since my first days in Spokane uh, in the nineteen eighties, but es- especially recently, as the mission has really expanded in terms of that broader level of, of reaching the community, um, and meeting needs where they're at, whether it's support for entrepreneurship and research, or, um, arts and culture, or, um, more basic human need support. Uh, the library has stepped up and been part of this, and I'm just really, really very grateful for it on, on behalf of the people of Spokane. Uh, I wanted to spend a few moments talking about our budget challenges and what I've asked, uh, of the library and other city departments and divisions, and where I think we'll head it with respect to the budget. Uh, and I will try to keep this, I want to make it comprehensive, but for you, you have a chance for there to be questions, questions. So no doubt you've heard that we are facing a structural budget deficit. There are different ways to add it up, uh, if you're looking at the general fund. It's twenty to twenty-five million dollars, if you're looking across all city functions, it could be, uh, much larger than that. The deficit did not happen overnight, and it's not just one single cause. Uh, a variety of things, certainly impacts of the pandemic, uh, inflation, but also there had been a set of, um, labor contracts that had been delayed or not resolved for a period of time, and then, once those were, uh, resolved, especially with inflation and, and cost of living increases, that has definitely contributed to this deficit. And then there were one-time funds that were available during the pandemic, especially over the last three years, that unfortunately were folded into ongoing expenses, um, leaving us with this gap. So in order to honor our commitments, uh, be fiscally responsible, and actually respond to some of our emerging and important community needs and, in community safety, we, uh, have just gone through a mid-year budget review, and we're going through a process of, which is never easy, a painful process, of trying to identify how we're going to bring those two lines back together, so that expenditures and revenue are headed at, growing at the same rate. Uh, I've brought to, there was already a co- a council conversation about two-year budgeting. So I was happy to have that proposal moved quickly through the council, so we'll be doing a biennial budget process this year. And the good news about that is we can spend less time budgeting and more time, uh, implementing and refining the already passed budgets. It also gives us frankly, a little bit longer runway. Our goal is now to balance this budget over the course of this two-year period of time. Uh, and I've taken a page from my days in the state legislature and asks, and this is tough on the budgeting team and the departments, but I very much appreciate that people are stepping up. We're basically doing what is called at the state level, a book one and a book two budget. So book one is living, it's like projecting forward current programs and projecting forward current, uh, uh, projecting forward current revenues, and then coming up with an expenditure that fits current revenues. So book one is like, no new revenues. You, we've got to live with what we currently got. Um, and then the book two budget, which I'll present later this year to council as a proposal that will be up to them to ultimately pass, is more the recommended strategy. But the reason that we're proposing these two strategies is so that the public and, um, all the team members across city government can sort of see that this is the, the boat that we're in right now, um, the dilemma of the current situation. Uh, so along those lines, I have asked all the departments to do an exercise in a ten percent budget reduction, with the exception of libraries in parks, who I asked to do a five percent exercise. And exempt, I exempted two, uh, departments, the Office of Police Ombudsman, because they have not received any enhancements over several periods, several year period of time, and the Civil Rights Office, which is just being set up. So those two small offices were exempt from the exercise, but other than that, have asked for those uh, potential cuts, which have now been submitted to the accounting team, and we will be spending the next several weeks reviewing those. Um, I want to make it clear, the goal is not just to adopt those proposals, uh, but to have a menu of options, and also frankly, to have an opportunity to educate council members, the public, uh, at large, what it really means in an organization like ours, which is very, very personnel-heavy. With the exception of, of some of the departments in Public Works, which, and, uh, you know, obviously the vehicle and, and capital requirements in police and fire, everything else city government does is really about people delivering services. So it's really hard to get to that ten percent level, if we're not talking about, uh, reduction of personnel. And we want to avoid that, and part of it is doing this book one budget, so people see what that really looks like, both in terms of what kind of service level reductions would be involved, and what, uh, potential personnel reductions would be involved. So, um, in order to get a little bit ahead of this, we've already taken a certain, uh, set of actions and efficiencies uh, to be in a little bit better shape when we start to really adopt the next year, the next two-year budget. Uh, just to give you a contrast, a year ago, the city was nine million dollars over budget by the middle of the year. Um, this year, in our mid-year budget review, we are half a million under. So that is a testament to, um, the work that's been done already to just try to, uh, stay within the budgeted levels and, uh, ha- and take some efficiencies that have already been identified. Uh, giving, giving you one example of something that's underway, the Police Guild, Spokane Police Leadership, and the Lieutenant's Captains Association have a clause in their collective bargaining contract that we have now activated that offers a voluntary retirement incentive for very senior personnel. And that gives you an opportunity to gain some salary savings, uh, by moving in some newer, less senior uh, people to fill those slots. So that is already underway. Um, uh, with a, with a limit, uh, attached to it, so that we know the maximum number of, of people that would take advantage of that. Uh, we might talk with other, um, bargaining union units about that same type of process, although it's not currently in their contract. Uh, and Spokane Fire's already canceled this year's Fire Academy, because we didn't want to train a new set of firefighters only to tell them as the lowest members in seniority that they're laid off at the beginning of the year. Uh, so that is delayed, hopefully not for too long, but those are the types of savings that we're looking at. Cabinet members are taking, uh, two days of unpaid furlough this year. Um, IT is renegotiating technology contracts. All departments are leaving vacant positions open if they don't feel that they're critical. And, um, uh, we hope by taking many of these actions, when you've got a structural gap, the sooner you take the actions, the better off um, you are. So we won't necessarily wait till next year, if certain things come forward that make sense. Uh, however, it's not enough. And so I've also proposed, uh, a, that the council put on the November ballot, a sales tax increase of one-tenth of one percent. It's a, it is a community safety levy authorized by the state legislature in which that tenth, uh, at, at least one-third of it has to be utilized for public safety purposes. But this follows public feedback that we've received, that people really do want to see investments there. Uh, we're very far behind in our, uh, fire rigs. Um, so there's maintenance that's been deferred for too long there, and things that need to happen in, in fire. We often need to consider the possibility of new stations because of the urban interface with wildfire and the unfortunate situation in, in fast-growing neighborhoods in LeTo Valley and Five Mile. Uh, so we are definitely going to need to be making some investments in, in fire safety. When it comes to police, the public's made it clear that when resource officers went away and the traffic calming units went away a few years ago, in order to create more of an emphasis downtown, that, that was really, uh, felt as a negative impact by neighborhoods, so we want to bring back traffic safety unit, we're going to bring back neighborhood resource officers. We don't necessarily just want it to be a zero-sum game, um, taking, uh, needed resources from downtown, so there are additional investments that need to happen there as well. And finally, an- another investment that we, we want to make is in community resiliency. And I just want to say, libraries are definitely part of that, so again, thank you for being flexible with respect to the, the cooling, uh, and the extended hours. Um, I'm very dedicated to help coming up with resources for that. And as we move forward, our vision is that community centers and libraries and potentially other facilities become identified as really, uh, resilient centers with, with backup energy in case of power outages, and the ability to help, um, people meet their needs when there's fire, heat, cold, or other types of natural disasters. Uh, the city does not have its own emergency plan. Uh, we have a plan, I don't mean to overstate it, but we have relied very heavily on the county for emergency planning, and a city this size needs to, um, have the ability to, uh, be at a higher level, uh, of managing resources. So building that community resilience and building out that emergency operations is also part of what we're proposing with this, with this levy. So the sales tax would generate about. So the sales tax would generate about seven point seven million a year. A percentage of our sales tax goes to the county automatically. Um, so this proposal is smaller than the original proposal. That I put forward, but we're very hopeful that if we have an approach that looks both at efficiencies as well as. This, um, a, additional funding. And having those, the longer timeline of two years. We can get to the same place of a balanced budget, make community safety investments, um, and be, uh, fiscally responsible. So, uh, that's the, that's a summary of where it's at. Because of the public support for libraries, because the levy recently passed. Um, I know that's a tough time to look at pulling back. But I just want to, uh, thank the team for going through this exercise with us and identifying, um, possible, possible. Reductions. We hope that we don't have to get there, but in case we do, it's better to have a sense of, of what the options are. So that's, that's essentially the report and I'm happy to. Take questions from the board.
Sure, if you want. I'm not on the board. What am I doing sitting up here? A couple of things. Um, one, now that we have a sense of where this is going. Uh, will we have the ability to make our own decisions about where things go? Or will it, because of some of the things that you've got identified, that we won't be able to earmark something?
Well, I mean, I, I see the board as having its, I mean, the board has autonomy. In, in decision-making, um. Within the, within the constraint of here's the funding that we can, we can, um, bring forward from the city. So I see it as a dialogue. And, and an iterative process. And clearly we're also within, um, the, the framework of our multiple collective bargaining units. Right? So I also see a dialogue happening with them about. Preferred ways, if we have to reach certain targets, preferred ways to reach those targets.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Brown, thank you very much for the presentation. I know this is a difficult process. Can you just give us a sense of some of the timelines that we may be able to expect to get a sense of how this is going to unfold in terms of. When you plan to present a budget to council and when they have, what their deadline is for adopting that so that we all have a.
Yes, so, uh. A process has been put in place, actually started. Uh, it, during the last administration and there is a monthly. Meeting between the council and the administration. That's, and it's a public meeting. It's devoted entirely to budget. It's happening this Thursday. And so at each of those monthly meetings, we hope to be able to share more about our decision-making process. The ten percent exercise, really departments just submitted that information. So the budget team is evaluating that. We're figuring out our process there. Probably it will be, um, a process in which the budget team makes its set of. Uh, analysis of that and, uh, then also, um. Our leadership team, a broader group within the cabinet. Will take a look as well and, and, uh, make some recommendations. To be clear, if we see efficiencies that make sense to take anyway, we should take them, right? It's, it should be an ongoing part of our process. Not to get too far ahead of Thursday, but we're looking at, um. A slightly different vision of how we're doing the communication within, uh, the mayor's office and, and the leadership level. Less long-form video, maybe more short form. And we're looking to go more sustainable and use less paper. So, um, potentially downsizing our reprographics, uh, department. Uh, for a different utilization of technology and less utilization of paper. So when we come across things like that, we need to just go ahead and move in those directions. Uh, so to get more specific to your point, um. We will present more of it each month. The council process, I don't have these deadlines exactly in my head yet, but it certainly is to pass, uh. In December, before the end of the year for the next two-year budget cycle. And the, uh, administration presents their proposal, I believe, early November at the latest. Clearly if council puts this sales tax on the ballot, we won't know the results of that until the election. So it's going to be a little tight there, um, uh, in terms of having that information. But we hope to be kind of rolling it out in an iterative way between now and then. So it's not just. You know, something that's hidden and then all of a sudden emerges before it's too late for public input. And when it comes to, um, the individual departments, again, this is a, um. It's a dialogue process that we anticipate having both with leadership. And with, with the leadership of bargaining units.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much. You get to follow that. So. So I don't know that I like to cut up there. What's the best spot?
A lot of back ends.
Right. So. Broke my back out tubing over last week. It actually feels good to stand. All right.
Wow.
Hold on.
So you can be on the video. There you go. Now you're just in, in the front of the screen. A little bit further.
So, all right. I'll, I'll try to be somewhere in the reasonable spot. There we go. Slides coming up. So I'm Mark. I'm the business research librarian for Spokane Public Library. And wanted to give a quick update on some things that we've got going with the startup Spokane program. Which if you aren't familiar with that, basically it's been up and running since twenty twelve-ish. Greater Spokane Incorporated was the organization that was running that for a number of years. Until we took it over and started the management of it just this last fall. So, um, it's been working out really well. Super happy with how things are going. But when we re-watched the website, uh, back in October, we were missing a bit of functionality, which is under the events tab right there. And when we took over the startup Spokane program, we were thinking, okay, we're going to go hard here. Start rolling out programming, events, classes, networking events. And I quickly realized that, right, we don't have a good, solid way of letting the community know. What events are happening? So we kind of tapped the brakes on that. And what we're trying to do with the events calendar is the community platform where. We can share events across the entire region and have them all on one page. And going into this, and this is a project I've been working on for roughly three or four years. And when I initially said, oh yeah, shared calendar, we'll have it up and running next week. That was four years ago. And it turns out that it's stupidly complicated. Because if you were to click on the events tab, um. Basically what we have right now are scrapers for about six different calendars from across the community. That get displayed on our calendar page and a link if you wanted to go. There are the forty-some calendars around town. That if you're trying to get plugged into whatever's going around along, um. Here in the Spokane business scene, and this is what you're faced with, and especially if you're new to town. That's awful. And when people, again, especially folks new, uh, to the region, they're like, hey, how do I get plugged into the local Spokane business scene? I'm like, well, awkwardly is the answer. So, um, of those forty-some calendars. We've got scrapers currently built for six of them. So if you want to go to the next slide, and this is what it currently looks like. Pretty slick. It's coming along. Next steps though. Beyond what we currently have, if you want to go to the next slide, please, yeah. So working with the professor at QuickBooks, he's been on computers. He is pretty optimistic that we will have some. Student muscle that he can throw at this here, this coming semester. And, um, possibly some more study types of, uh, positions. So. Kind of keeping an eye out for potential funding to make that happen, which gets me to the second bullet point. All the work that's been done up to this point has been done by a volunteer, a developer here in town. He's been writing code. And his estimate is that it takes him about five to six to seven hours per site to write the code. Test it, make sure that it's working as it should. And that's for the six scrapers that we've got going so far. So, um. If buckets of money are falling from the sky and you don't know what to do with them, uh, let me know. Cause I would definitely make the case for throwing it at Ben Downey. These are. Our developer who's been volunteering on this. So, um. Once we get that up and running, there are two things that I'm looking for in terms of benefits with this. One, our global businesses to know what's going on in terms of networking events, classes, education, types of things. That's super valuable. And then two, for that whole list of organizations with their websites. That were not double and triple and quadruple stacked in events on top of each other. Uh, just last month at the Hive, um, on a Thursday morning, we had like a business brew. Event. So it was coffee and a business presentation. Actually, oh, you know who's there? You were the, you were the guest presenter. Um, right on the other side of that. Other side of that wall in the Hive was another coffee and concepts, business concepts, conversation. Same time, same building, basically overlapping content, which is just silly. That, um, as a community, if we have a platform that allows those organizations to be able to sit through and say, oh. Three Thursdays out, that's wide open. That's when I'm going to have to post my event. That's the other primary benefit that, that we're looking for. So that's the quick update with what's going on with Startup Spokane, but specifically on the calendar front. Any questions? Or money?
I missed the last presentation.
Thank you. This is, this is a good, a, a good new step. This, and now that we know that we've got all of these. Out there. It's a lot easier than just pick and choose and to let people know what's out there.
Yeah. And I do feel like we've kind of got the infrastructure in place now. Where I get an email at two thirty-nine every morning, where the scrapers go out, they find here are the new events. And then I can sit through and say, yes, this one definitely, let's add it. This one, maybe it's a. Pumpkin carving and green bluff type of event, not really business focused like I want. So I can say, no, not that one. So we've got the, we've got kind of the building blocks and we've got basically the, the infrastructure laid out. Now we just kind of need to start piling on top of it.
Which are the top three or four that are getting most traction?
Ah, you know, I don't have a good answer for that right off the top. Been able to kind of. Put together some sort of reporting mechanism for that. But in my mind, I would say, um, the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center. Their, uh, events and the courses that they offer are pretty awesome. Um, SCORE, which is department through the Small Business Administration, they, they have really good stuff. SP3 Northwest through WSU, that's another good place to keep track of. So if I were just spitballing like I just did, um, those would be the three that would come up with. Yeah.
Are any of these organizations willing to pay?
Um, that's the conversation that I'm going to start having. The developer just put together a proposal for us for fully fleshing this out. So now that I have a, uh, an actual proposal and kind of a price range that he'd be looking for. I think I can start shopping in around town and saying, hey. This is doable, but it's not free.
Any questions from our board? Okay. Any other agenda items that people want to add and subtract? Multiply? All right. Public comment? Our next regular meeting is August twentieth at the Central Library. I don't think we have the need for an executive session today. Then I believe we, we are, Jim.
Thank you.